Good evening, everyone. It is time is 5:30. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. The meeting has been duly posted and required by state law, and we do have a quorum. I ask everyone to stand up so we can start with the prayer.
Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. And where there is sadness, joy. O divine master, grant that we may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. Pray that it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardon that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mark, if you can read the conflict of interest?
Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a council member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion nor vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
None?
None.
None. Okay. We're going to go with citizen communication. Melinda, do we have any citizen communication?
Yes, sir, we do. We have a total of four. Our question was Ron Lozano.
Mr. Lozano, please state your name and district, please.
Ron Lozano, three. To be or not to be, the eternal query persists. In one corner, you have that corrosive inequity represented by Gabe Gonzalez and his petty or bought allies. On the other, a recent arrival type, like Billy Budd, myself, and at the minimum, at the minimum, one eternal ally. Don't bet against the one written up in the gospel. Trump gets indicted and his latest attorney says the case started a year earlier than it actually did, just to impress upon us that he seeks delay, 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 much like Gabe, the city manager. HPD, where a lot of evil resides at the top, lied through the records manager Monica, and now refers simple, open record type requests to Mr. Saucy, who just arrived from Cancun, as Mr. Perez had a while back. So I imply that, given Gabe's penchant, Mark's going to become a wealthy man because he might have to review thousands of documents, all false, but he's going to have to peruse them. So the mayor, since in a heap, she bolts for Tennessee Hills. You can run, but a son judge will soon inform her you can't hide. She says no city money was expended at her event. Just take a look at the fine print. So we need to be clear. We don't want anyone in our family to be charged falsely. That's the lesson of Easter season. And that's how far someone as evil as Gabe can take this, because he has no regard for human beings. Zachary Christian is no longer a miner. And that's where, at times, the presiding officer doesn't grasp, yeah, I have a line. I'm not going to go after miners. I never have, I never will. But when they're not miners anymore, that first accuser is going to be ferreted out, and she will confirm my innocence. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lozano. Next.
Next one is Mr. Raymond Reyes.
Raymond Reyes, District One. So basically, just making my appearance like always. Apparently there's other things going on that I haven't been kept up to speed on, but that's okay. There's always something going on. Life is life. Can't make everybody happy. We just do the best we can with what we got. It's a mixture of good and bad. Hopefully, good will prevail. There's a lot of things that, at least, that I'm trying to initiate and make some positive changes and ensure that that things go through. Being an analyst, I always try to make sure the checks and balances are in place, especially when there could be large expenditures of money involved. I don't like to, to ask for money, because then, like, in some cases, it gets thrown back in your face, oh, remember, I helped you out, I backed you up, now you owe. I don't like to owe anybody. That's why I do it on my own, or with vested partners that I have that are on the same path as me. I'd like to see continued growth and positive things happen. Harlingen has always been here for a long time, though I still, you know, have roots in San Antonio where I'm born and raised. But I'd like to see positive things keep happening. I would like to also see that the public be kept more in the loop about certain things. And I thought that, you know, the public forums that we had for each district, where the citizens could come out and do their concerns, of course, the things with those can be long, because, you know, people come up and state the different concerns that they have for their particular district. So I think maybe doing them, but limiting to five minutes and stuff, would be good. That way, the citizens feel like they're, you know, they're part of the check and balance, in other words. There's few individuals that, that don't speak up. My biggest problem is, I speak up. I don't care who it is, you know. I don't care who you may be, or if you think you got it like that, how many zeros you have in the bank. You're not the only one with zeros in the bank and stuff. So I think as long as we do the right thing for the right reasons, we're good. The commissioners, as always, are elected to do the positive things for the citizens, and as long as it's a positive thing for the citizens, I think we're good. I think we can get caught up in this power thing. You know, we try to leave our mark. Hopefully, it's a positive mark, because some people have not done so well, when they ended up doing the wrong things for what they thought were the right reasons, and then they find out later, they were wrong. So with that note, the bell has rung. My time is over, but we are, we are good to go. And thank you very much. No, okay. Thank you, Commissioner, for doing a good job, and thank you for your time. Y'all have a good evening.
Next, we have Desi Martinez.
Desi Martinez, 1806, Haverford, Bristol. Here to compete with Cameron County for the two million, almost $2 million tourist funds that they're asking to build the road. I'd like to start with their, the lack of, and I'm saying compete, compete for the city of Harlingen and the tourist people paying taxes into it, City of Harlingen, and the three tourists. I'm in, I live in District Five, tourist number three, yes. It appears that there's no feasibility study. The only request that the city manager's making is to extend all grinds all the way to 1609, the farm market road by the port, without analysis. The real danger of what's happening at the port is from the import-export of diesel and fuel, which should expand Harrison Street out in the Curbs in terms of that area, Ed Carey, to make it a single truck, I mean, truck-only route down Ed Carey to the bridge. We have a, we used to have, three years ago, about 150 trucks that used to come for diesel from Mexico, because they can't use their diesel when they bring their trucks this way to bring avocados and whatever they bring to export to the world or to the United States. So they come buy diesel here, and then we've seen that now double. That's about the extent of fuel danger that we have out there. There's no feasibility study, and opening the grinds will only create that additional hazard. Without a feasibility study into hazard, life and safety, that should not, we should not do this extension at this time. If the Cameron County has other resources available, being an economic developer in this Cameron County area, and parts up to North Texas, I mean, West Texas, small cities, that they have EDA funds. The port just got an Economic Development Administration grant. The county has access to the NPO, RGV NPO, and putting that road, if it's feasible, into text-out funding. They have $10 billion. Why are they trying to take the city folks' tourist money for developing new affordable housing or infrastructure where we do it now? After especially the COVID, after especially, not only COVID, but the financial conditions that our poor community's in, in terms of the businesses now paying their PPP loans, it is important that our city manager and his be tabled the situation for further study. I'm not denying the access of potential new growth. We probably need it at the end of this decade. It's not far away. But we need more study, and we need to do, reserve the right to speak on this that I submitted to you during the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
And next, we have Mr. Robert Luthwich.
Robert Luthwich, District Three. I just wanted to come out today after watching the last city commission meeting. There was a couple of kind of heated items on there. One of them was the developer request to rezone to multifamily. And then the other one was the creation of the charter committee, review committee. And I don't think that should have been as controversial as it turned out to be, but I just wanted to kind of throw out some things that I heard, because it confused me when we got to the qualifications to be appointed to the charter review committee, based on what I heard, especially from what the mayor said. The mayor advocating for the developer said that millennial renters needed, did not have any availability to rent off of Dixieland Road. And that's, that's probably fact. That's true. The point there is that, obviously, she was, you know, trying to help the developer, which were opposing the single-family residents that were out there. Now, fast forward to the charter review committee. Now, all of a sudden, the mayor is saying, you have to have, you have to own property or own a business in Harlingen to qualify to serve on the committee. That's what I saw on the video. That was the first thing I saw, and I was like, what happened to the millennial renters? So I looked at the census data for Harlingen, and only 58% of Harlingen residents are homeowners. Disqualifying somebody based on the fact that they don't own property is a discriminatory practice that goes back 50, 60 years, and it's no longer used. And I hope that's not the case, but that's what I, that's why I heard. And I did request the next day some more information on the, what was settled on the qualifications for the, for the charter review committee. But I hope that you guys, if that's the case, that y'all go back and do that, because if the thing is, is that now you say, well, if you just own a business in Harlingen, you can be on that committee, but you can't vote because you live in some other city? The city charter governs the way we structure our government and citizens' rights, and it keeps a balance of power. We don't need somebody on that committee that can't even vote, but yet we don't let people who can vote in this city serve on the committee, but they have to vote on something that somebody from outside the city told them that that's what you were going to, that that's the option. Obviously, you guys are the ultimate say on what gets on a ballot, but does that make sense? If you're going to disqualify people because they don't own property in the city of Harlingen, or they're only qualified because they have a business in Harlingen, but yet they're not a qualified voter? Please go back and review that and make sure that's not the case. Anybody that serves on that committee needs to be a registered voter in the city of Harlingen. And that's all I'm asking that y'all do that, before y'all make any appointments. And if you don't want to change it, at least make your appointment for somebody that's in the city of Harlingen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luthwich.
That's it for the public comments.
If there's no more public comment, we'll go ahead and move, move on to the approval of minutes for the meetings of June 29th, July 5th, and July 13th. Any changes? No changes? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now to item number two, the consent agenda. Does anybody need anything removed? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make the motion to approve all the items in the stamp.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now on to new business. Item three, the consideration and possible action to declare the itemized list of non-real estate personal property as surplus personal property, as recommended by staff, and authorize city personnel to conduct a public auction of said property Saturday, August 26, 2023.
Good evening, Mayor Protam and city commissioners. This is our annual auction. It'll be held as an online auction, as it was in the past two years. So we are-
I'm sorry, Robert, can you?
Sure. It is our, oh, Robert Rodriguez, Finance Director for the City of Harlingen. And this is our annual auction that we hold every year. It is going to be online, as it has been the past two years. We've had success doing it online. It will be August 26, and attached, you have a list of the items. So, so what happens every year, departments put together a list of stuff that they, they no longer have use in their department, and they compile the list, send it to us, and we put the list together, and then present it to you all for approval for the auction.
Question.
Yes, sir.
We've done public prior, correct?
I'm sorry?
We've done public auctions prior.
Yes.
But haven't we also done online auctions?
Yeah, the past two years, they've been online.
Okay. Why go to public versus online?
It's, it actually is online. I mean, there are public auctions, because they're open to the public, but, but these are going to be online through bond and bond.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, they are online.
So it will be online, just not local people?
Yes.
Okay, great.
That's right.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, you got it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. There's somebody who's watching.
Okay, now onto item four, the consideration and possible action to authorize the city manager to sign a utility easement document for drainage improvements at the intersection of Colorado Street and Liberty Avenue.
Mayor Commissioners, good evening. Javier Cervantes, Planning Director for the Record. So we have a project for drainage improvements at the corner of Liberty and Colorado. It's an area that tends to flood in any major rain. So we got an agreement with the property owners to run a storm sewer line to the Arroyo from the intersection. So the, we're ready to go on the project. We just need this utility easement approved, to approve the city manager to sign it, and so we, the project can go forward.
Any discussion?
I got a question. Obviously, this is in my, my neck of the woods, and I've been there multiple times. Any little rain, it gets about more than ankle-high. That corner will get knee-high, with all the water runs, runs through it. I'm not opposed to it, but I, my question is this. This is ARPA funds. Are we taking this from the Harlingen Water Works? Are we doing this out of our account?
Commissioner, we're not touching the ARPA funds for waterworks. Those have already been set aside for them. The only way we can take those back is if we have commission approval to do that. This is coming from ARPA funding, but from the city portion of those funds.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Javier. Onto item number five, the consideration and possible action to approve a renewal agreement between the City of Harlingen and United Healthcare to provide employee group health insurance.
Mayor, Members of the Commission, Roger, who's our consultant for our interns, is going to provide a presentation on the major medical coverage.
Good evening, Mayor and Honorable Members of the Commission and City Manager Gonzalez. And thank you so much for taking the time this, this evening. First of all, as you know, that United Healthcare is our current carrier, has been, and submitted a renewal earlier this summer, that had approximately a 12% increase on the city's portion of its rates. However, after going back and forth on multiple negotiations with United Healthcare, we went out to bid inadvertently by, you know, getting ahead of ourselves, and they came back and offered to renew the city's health portion of it at a 4.9% interest, or I'm sorry, increase. So we thought that was very competitive, so we withdrew the RFP and recommended to the city to accept the offer from United Healthcare. If you look at the proposed, I'm sorry, I've got it here. Let's see if I can get this right. I, I don't, I don't think this is, this is minus a reason.
There's a right arrow. Just hit that, and it'll advance the slide.
Oh, there you go.
There you go.
All right, perfect. Thank you, sir. If you look at the rates, the rates will basically are a 4.9% increase. It's approximately $389,000 increase over previous year. And as you recall, last year, we had almost a, we negotiated again. So in this particular instance, we are, we're looking at a positive result. What we have done in the past, and we recommend that the city continue, is that it takes its, I'm sorry, it takes the commission and pays it under a separate invoice item, so it's not embedded in the employees' portion of the premium. And it, we also, pardon me, we negotiate with the carrier, and we're based on these, this is part of the savings strategies that we've implemented from last year, so we're probably bringing them forward again. So the annual increase is less than 5%, and it's very competitive, and we compared it against other entities in the area. And right now, Harlingen is in that same category. Actually, it's very competitive. So this is what we're looking at. Last year, we had approximately $7.7 million premium. This year, currently, is at 8.1. It's a $389,000 increase again. The cost increase is 5%. We rounded off at 5%. The annual compensation rate, or the service fees, are $92,520. We have a combined total of $8.3 million of total funded cost. And we recommend that the city renew the contract with United Healthcare.
Just to provide a recap, last year, we went from paying service fees of $300,000 for the policy, down to the negotiated $92,000. That was $10 per employee. That was something that Roger was instrumental in helping us negotiate. This year, again, they came back initially with a 12.9% increase. We asked them to go to 5. They said no. We, well, not forbid, but in the process of doing that, they came back to Roger and said, okay, we'll do the 4.9. And so staff is recommending approval of the policy and the renewal.
Did we ever get the results of those bids?
No, we actually, because it came back at 5%, we asked, we pulled the ad and notified everybody that had requested that we weren't going to be accepting, pending the commission approval. Now, if you deny this, we'll have to go out for our, our piece, but I don't know that we're going to get such a great rate as 5%. Roger is recommending that we do it. He says it's comparable with the industry standards, and so that's why we pulled back the, the request for bids.
But they were, before you got the 5%, what was it, 20%?
12, 12.9, yes.
So just by making the threat, they came down 7%?
Yes, sir. We actually had already sent out the notification to the paper, which is why we couldn't withdraw it fast enough. We got it after, actually, after 5 o'clock on a Friday, so it was already out. So Monday, we were able to notify the city that they had come back and-
Right, we ran the ad on, on Saturday, and then they called us the following week saying, so, coincidental or not, I'm, we're not really sure, but we got a reduction. We just, what we wanted.
I'm fine with it for this year, but I'm just not a big fan of us having to, you know, do that, and then they come down 7%. That's, that's, that's a lot, right? And it makes me worried about, you know, them trying to fleece us all the time, right? Tried to fleece us in the past?
It's all part of the game. And at a 4.9, 5% increase, I think that's a fabulous, small number, given inflation throughout the economy and throughout the healthcare system. I think that's a pretty good deal. And last year, you didn't do this. You're not doing it this year, sir. The AM Best Rating is A+, top-ranked insurance company, and that matters when COVID and other events happen.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve then, going back with United.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And now to item number six, consideration and possible action to approve or renew agreement between the City of Harlingen and Aetna to provide employee group dental insurance.
Once again, Honorable Mayor and Honorable Members of the Commission, and again, City Manager Gonzalez, we received the renewal offer from Aetna for the employee dental portion of the insurance. They had originally set a rate of 4.9%. We were asked to compare those rates across the region to determine whether competitive or not. We felt at the time that they were competitive. However, staff actually took a step forward, went out and renegotiated, and the carrier came back and dropped the rates one more time to 8.2%, which we thought was more than competitive, and were recommended to renew of this agreement with Aetna.
Roger, just to provide some clarity, this is a policy that the city does not pay for. It's paid for directly by employees who want to have dental coverage. So the city doesn't pay any part of this at all?
It's employee-paid directly.
Right. And the, the actual rate went up 2.9%, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
Yeah, 2.89% increase.
But then it goes up 5% the following year?
I beg your pardon, sir?
Yes.
It says 2.9% increase with a second-year renewal rate cap at 5%. So it can go up to 5% the following year?
Yes. What, what we've been seeing a lot is carriers are coming back and putting cap increases, so that you can actually make multi-year agreements if you wish to do so. We don't really recommend that. We recommend that you accept the one year. If the offer and the competitive offers are not there next year, we can actually either solicit or accept that.
Right, we don't have to accept that. We can go out for bids if we need to.
Something I've done before, the county we use, in the legal department, we use Westlaw, which they, they will go after your pennies pretty aggressively. And what I've done with them, I don't know if it's something for you all to consider, is go for like a five-year contract, but them only go up 1% every year, right? First, just for further consideration, right? The incentive to them is, they get us for five years, but we get the best rate possible for our employees. Just because employees are paying for it doesn't mean I want them fleeced. I want to make sure that we get our employees the best deal possible.
Absolutely. And we did do a comparison, as I stated earlier, and we compared against other entities in the same category. And they were very competitive to begin with, and then they were in the same line. In some cases, you were actually lower than some of the cities, such as Westco and other cities in that area.
Matter of fact, one of the policies that the employees pay for is life insurance, and they came back substantially higher than we had hoped for. So we're actually out on bids for that right now. So this one came in at 2.89%, so that's why we're bringing it forward to the commission. And the following policy has no increase, so that's why we're bringing that one back, too.
That was my favorite policy out of the three so far, and no increase. Okay, I'm making a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Go ahead and say it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now on to item number seven, consideration and possible action to approve a renewal agreement between the City of Harlingen and Davis Vision to provide employee group vision insurance.
Make a motion to approve?
Yeah, I just want to point out that I never heard of these firms, so I looked it up. So Davis Vision is a subsidiary of Versant Health, and that's a subsidiary of MetLife. So, yeah, so deep pockets once again.
Yeah, Davis is pretty good. That's the one that the school district has, and I get it for my glasses, and it's pretty good.
Same for the county.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
No, I'm sorry. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now on to item number eight, public hearing on first reading to approve ordinance amending the City of Harlingen's- the City of Harlingen's ordinance 06-31, expanding the boundaries and approving the amended project plan and finance plan for the Harlingen, TERS number one.
Mayor, Members of the Commission, we had a meeting with the TERS board, and the TERS approved amending the boundaries of TERS number one, only to include Grimes Road from Loop 499 to FM 509. It's only right-of-way being added. They also amended the project plan and the finance plan to actually include the project. In the finance plan, they actually approved up to $2 million of project costs for this particular project. Now, I'd like to point out that these amendments do not actually fund the project. They only enter the project into the possibilities of one of the projects being funded by the TERS. So this action tonight will not add any dollars to that particular project. We still have to come back with an agreement between the city and the county to actually allocate any funds from this TERS to that particular project. So that, that's coming in the future. And before that happens, if the commission approves these items tonight, the city still has to go to the county and ask the county to amend, because they're a part of the TERS also, they have to amend the, the boundaries to include Grimes and to amend the project plan and the finance plan also. And by taking, if they take that action and approve it, again, it will not add any financial dollars to the particular project. It just lists it as being eligible for funding.
Okay, for those that, those that might be watching home, can you explain what a TERS is and how it works?
Oh, absolutely. A TERS is a tax increment reinvestment zone. The city currently has three. And what, what it does is it takes a large area that the city designates, and then what it does is it takes a snapshot of that TERS at the time it was created. And then, so the way it generates funding is that the city will agree to fund a certain percent of the TERS. In this case, I think the city agreed to fund 60% of the added value. So what that means is that in order for a TERS to actually thrive, you have to have vacant property or property that is dilapidated, that can be torn down, and something new constructed on it. So the way they make their money is that anything that's constructed new, that added value will be taxed by the city and the county. In this case, it's also Cameron County because they agreed to participate in the TERS. And then those extra dollars that are generated by the new construction are set aside for the TERS to spend on public infrastructure only. You can't spend it on, on economic development for lending money to an entity to construct a retail structure or a restaurant. Everything you spend money on a TERS has to be either public roads, public lights, water and sewer, those types of developments. So that's, that's, that's what a TERS, in short, actually is. And again, this is TERS number one. We have TERS two and three.
What's the area of TERS number one?
That's a good question, Commissioner. I don't think I've brought that with me. It doesn't have the area. You're talking about the square footage, right?
No, just like the areas so people can...
Oh, the area, okay, okay. Well, it starts and covers most of Loop 499. It covers part of the area north of the airport, which is TSTC property. And then it comes down through the loop, and it covers part of the Grimes area and all that vacant farmland. That's why it's going to generate money because of the, the construction is going to be created there, will generate revenue for the TERS. And then it goes up to Loop 499 and FM 106 and covers most of that area. And that's really the boundary for this particular TERS.
Okay, thank you, Gabe. Any discussion?
Do you have a traffic impact, impact study?
Traffic impact, no. That's not required.
That's not required?
No.
So how do we know if this project's going to be viable?
Well, one of the reasons that this project came up, Commissioner, is because of the, the industrial park that's going to be constructed behind the airport. That area is prime for development, and so this is really the only way to access that property. Once you get, you have to get on Grimes to get to Bob Uker to get to that area. And so this particular improvement, this road right now is a two-lane road, and so the bulk of the traffic will come from, we hope, the port, which is off of 106, and, and off of traffic 509 and from the Loop 499. So they'll use Grimes, which is right now a two-lane road, and if it's approved later through the county agreement, it'll be constructed into a four-lane road to get to Bob Uker to get to the airport.
When you say, "we hope," you're talking about utilizing or having more traffic for the port, correct?
Yes.
We hope.
Both from the port and the Aratropolis and then the industrial park on the east side, right?
How soon can we see that development, that increase?
That's what we're working on, right? That's why we created the EDC plan last week that you participated in.
Yeah.
Right? And so what you're going to have is if you look, I have the map, I pulled it up because I never remember where it's at, but if you look over at the ULA building that we're trying to fill, whatever is produced there then can then take Grimes and then go to the port to be shipped out, or vice versa, right? Whatever we get in from the port can go right down Grimes and then straight to that ULA building for construction or whatnot.
Marv has been asking that we work on, on Grimes, but he also wants us to work on Bob Uker as well, because that's, it's in, it's in pretty bad shape, so...
I, I understand, I understand that. My, my thing is this, right now, and I know it'll be shut down with this one, the TERS can be used for water and sewer, correct?
Yes, for public water and sewer, yes.
Currently, about, what, 10, 10 months ago, we're presented with a big old workshop from the Harlingen Water Works. We're, we're looking at $170 million from two years ago's monies, 2020, 2021, something like that. Why can't we use some of this funds for projects in TERS one for water and sewer? That would make a bigger impact than, than building a road that's going to be used in five years or whenever it's going to come into fruition.
Commissioner, I'm not sure what part of that, I know the plan you're talking about, but I'm not sure what part of that might be within TERS one boundary.
See, this is, these are numbers that I'm, I'm looking at, okay? We're looking at $2 million for this project. And from what I saw last week or whenever we had that meeting, is that 60, 40, it's 80, 20, where the county would pay 20% and the city would pay 80% of the cost to, to get this road out to ground, or to develop this road, this section of Grimes.
No, that's, that's, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I probably should have shared this with you initially. The cost of materials is going to be about $1.9 million. Of that, the city is going to pay 1.4, which is what we have right now in the TERS, right? Cameron County would pay for $520,000 of that materials cost, and then they're going to pay for all the labor that's going to be, because they're going to do it in-house. So all the labor for that road will be about $2 million. And then they're also going to design it in-house, and the engineering design costs are, they're estimating at 476. So the county, including their, their force account work and their financial contribution will be about $3 million, and ours will be about 1.4 million.
And you've got to remember with TERS, different taxing entities give up their taxes within that area, right? So on this one, on TERS number one, as I understand, Gabe, correct me if I'm wrong, Harlingen gave an 80% like abatement, and Cameron County gave 100% abatement. I don't know what the schools also gave in this area as well.
The schools didn't do anything.
Therefore, even with the $2 million that you're referencing, essentially, the county also kicked in more money because of their bait. So that $2 million is not Harlingen money, that's a mis, a nomer, a mischaracterization. It's TERS number one money.
But 1.4 billion is in the banking account for, for this project, under the church, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So we're going to come up with another $600,000 to give it to, or it's just going to be a part of a...
Well, Commissioner, that's just a placeholder dollar amount. The contract with the county would be for 1.4 million. I, I just confirmed that with Pete later this morning.
The 1.4 is from where?
The TERS.
Okay.
Yeah, but again, this, this particular item will not allocate that money to, to this road. It's just allocating the road as an eligible project in the TERS. So the only way to actually allocate that money to the TERS is if we come back with an agreement with the city and the county that says we're going to allocate 1.4 million from the TERS to the county to do this road. And that's, that's still a few months away because there's still a few steps we need to do in between.
I understand. But my biggest fear is we're taking a step towards getting this into fruition, and we're not looking at what was just right up earlier. Look at the, what do you call it, the RBG FBOs, tax dollars. What could they contribute toward this project?
But this is an off-system road, so probably...
So they won't touch it?
Not right now, no.
You were there at the TERS meeting as an observer, and what was discussed was that this would open up major highway to expand Aratropolis, if I can use that word, and to expand the medium light industrial area south of Grimes. And that will bring in more tax dollars that goes into TERS that feeds this baby, and it will encourage economic growth in that part of the city. And this is a win-win, and the TERS committee voted to do this, and it would be wise to follow the TERS committee and their action.
I understand that.
I want to go over... Sorry, it's not, it's, Desi, it's not open for public comment. It's not, it's not a hearing.
This is, this is my response, which I believe I asked, will it take one day, one year, 10 years before we can get that road to where it's going to encompass and provide all those tax revenues? We don't have somebody else coming in, taking over the ULA building right now. So we start to do, we're working all of this, and that road, I can assure you, will be built and be constructed before we have somebody on a dotted line and they're moved in just for that building. So in the meantime, we would expense this fund, these funds for this road. All right? And, and that's, that's my concern. Now, keep in mind, last time we touched this subject, we had the residents in that area come up here wanting us to hold off on that. So I, I'm not, I am not comfortable with this at all. I started to give you some numbers. You can say 1.4 instead of 2 million.
Commissioner, we can, we can do that. We can change the project plan and the finance plan to say, say 1.5 million, bring it down to 2 million, just a number I picked, just to give us some leeway in case there were some cost over there.
I understand. What I'm asking for, okay? Let's do this impact study, see how, how it's, how is it going to impact the whole area, the traffic? Because the numbers that I saw here, from Grimes to just past the, the residential area was about 4,000. And then from that area to 509 was slightly over 2,400. So as of right now, as of yesterday, the day before, the, the numbers are not there. Okay? I, I can assure you, okay? We can ju, this is one step forward, the giant step forward, then we can run. Let me give you another example, okay? The, which, this is something I oppose, was we pulled about 1.3 from the Harlingen Water Works for the detention part. I oppose that, all right? The whole thing with that is, if you stop and think about it, that 1.3 was going to be for Water Works projects, and, and 10 of those people already, they have stuff going on. They showed us the dilapidated structures and pipes underneath. And with this heat, I can assure you, we're going to be in a deep trouble in the very near future. There's areas right now in my district that have wastewater that comes up onto the streets. The Fourth of July, I've had the same situation. Now, what I'm trying to get to is that project that, you know, as the commission went with on the drainage, the stakes for that is from 2008, which means it was 10 years before we had those issues in 2018 and 2019. So right there, you're looking at 1.3 mil. And just several months ago, all right, the G, what is it, Texas GLO awarded some products. Harlingen didn't get anything, all right? That was 1 million bucks that we lost, because that was the max. Combs got it, Rimera got it, Riondo got it, La Feria got some money, Santa Rosa. This is just in Cameron County. So now you're looking at another 1.1 mil. That right there is 2.3 that could be used for what? Either drainage or wastewater issues. And now whatever we want to attack, attach to this project, all right? We're still in the hole. And it's just, I'm, I've known Nostradamus, and I know Edgar Cayce, but I tell you what, in 60 days, we're going to be presented with, you know what? We need a little bit of tax, a little bit more tax increases. We might reduce the tax rate, but then again, this city will collect more taxes than it did the year before, or just about. That's one. Secondly, all right? Along with that, we're going to get hit with increased water rates because they need to start working some of these projects. So we got to put our, our infrastructure of water, sewer, and drainage to the forefront. And, and there's somebody else here that, that we need to touch base on. And I don't think any of us here, and it doesn't really fall on the commission, it falls on you, sir, or Mr. Ramida's over there, to stay in contact with Rolando Vera out of Drainage District Number Five. Why is he so vital? Because he got the, the legislators, and he got Texas Water Development Board to actually listen. We need artificial drainage. Now, we need to keep that in mind, and how the heck can we use that toward our advantage for our water, for our sewer issues? We, we need to stay on top of these guys, you know? And if I'm mistaken, those people will be in the area later on this month. When? I do not know. But I can reach out to Mr. Vera tomorrow, but this is something that, you know, am I stepping on your toes or someone else's toes? Because nobody's going to go after you.
Frank, I agree with you. I think, I think all of us here on the commission want to do, want to help Water Works out and also improve our drainage. I mean, you, we've had the conversation many times, and my district, District Five, is the one that needs the most sewer health improvements than any other district. So I agree with you, but the item right now, all we're doing is we're just going to propose, it becomes a possibility. But I agree with you, like, this money, we should look into more details and how it could be used to fund other projects, but right now, this is just making it a possibility. Like Gabe said, we, it has to come back to us again, and when it comes back to us again, you know, we can bring up some other stuff. We'll have more information, maybe for the drainage after the Water Works, and then we can just vote it down if that's what everybody wants.
If I may comment, Mr. Morales was at that meeting, and his first part of this conversation was an exact parroting of the person who voted against the project. And that this project is TERS one in that area, and we can't use it for drainage, and we can't take it anywhere else in the city. Let's expand the road, let's expand the potential for economic, economic opportunities and more light industry and medium industry and Aratropolis, which brings in higher-paying jobs, which creates the whole economic ripples that create success for Harlingen.
Any more, any more discussion?
So I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner, this, this is a public hearing, so we have to have...
Oh, it is a public hearing?
Yes, sir, we have to open up a public hearing. Yes, sir, it's a public... Oh, it does, okay.
Okay, apparently it is a public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to speak in favor or against this project? Desi?
Yes, sir. I am an Economic Development Commissioner, Whismer. I appreciate your concern, but there is no aerofigodomics out there. It is empty land, and there is potential to grow out there, but they have the routes right now to take, Commissioner. Cameron County wants to expand the roads. We need to expand water and sewer, particularly to those areas. I have a project because the staff and others are not bringing projects to the table. I'm bringing one project for Seclude Acres, Spanish Acres area, and all that land and commerce and that interchange of 77 and, and commerce that flooded. And you said in the campaign, some people had the road canoes out there, and you... And you said in the campaign, some people had the road canoes out there, and you see my brother's house flooded, and the reason it flooded, I believe, and I'm not engineer, I'm not attorney, but you work for Cameron County, and this this is enough, we need that money here in the TERS, each one of the three TERS that has three boards, according to the act, which I know how to implement, I've worked with other small cities or cities, including Brownsville area, to develop TERS with private-public investments and bring it out. If you keep that feeling conditioned out there, in that wall that we have in that drainage ditch with any new alternatives, because your staff is not bringing projects to the table, any wolf will come in and take the deer. That money belongs to Harlingen's residents in those three TERS, I belong in in TERS number five, they have a half a million, we have comparable issues, but that wall and that ditch, I think, is holding water all the way back from Clark, not Clark, anyway, the the railroad tracks and the and the sands, all the way down that way. You know that, it's one, the city is flooding, or will flood, and it's going to be, if we, you, this to complement what you already already implemented, the ponding, we can assure the public and the investors and that real estate that's out there, that they were not going to be further taxed with higher flood flood insurance. Please, Commissioner, you work for Cameron County, I'm here to compete against them, because this is not right. That money that you got, two million bucks, was generated over the last five years. It's going to take years to accumulate any more funds, and we need shovel ready projects to get the job done. They are failed to bring the projects, I I hope they do better. That's all I can ask.
Thank you very much, Mr. Martinez.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak for public comment, either for or against this issue?
President Truman, what a good name, huh? He stated, if you can't stand the heat, don't get in the kitchen. He didn't anticipate an inferno that Gabe can create, but as it was at the last meeting, the mayor has acknowledged that woeful letter written about her, I had nothing to do with that letter. I had nothing to do with any of you getting involved in the city commission. Two of you, once on you, I did immediately help. Two million is just a number I picked. Everything's a game to Gabe, okay? I should have, I should, I'm sorry, I should have brought, you can go back every meeting this calendar year, and sixty-five, eighty percent of them, the same phrase, "I'll get back to your son," and he never does.
Excuse me, Mr. Lozano, this is a public comment for a public hearing and ordinance.
About TERS, about TERS that has to do with Grimes Road. Aratropolis, that was brought up during the discussion, if you were listening, you just came in from Cancun. Which one of you has the courage, how long has that been bandied, as Mr. Martinez just said? Any one of you have the courage of saying, "How many years it's been?" And nothing is there? Silence! It's deafening, it's ricocheting off Saucy. Twenty and more years have elapsed that that phrase has been utilized by the PR people of Harlingen, and nothing, absolutely nothing. The last guy with the insurance, the talk in his lingo, I went down Grimes last week, had a significant clip, okay? There's nothing that needs to be done to that road? That road is more than ample. I asked Mr. Gonzalez, do you know, you've been making a lot of reference to Bob Uker during this hearing, Mr. Saucy, do you know if that Bob Uker runs perpendicular or parallel to Grimes? You don't know where Bob Uker Road is?
Mr. Lozano, we're speaking specifically about the TERS.
Well, that's, he he brought up Bob Uker, I, do you think I brought that up? This is a public hearing, he's entitled to answer about that.
We do not engage in.
You're wrong, you cannot show me, ask Mark to show you an excerpt where that happens during a public hearing. He can't, and you're wrong, you were wrong, you didn't even know there was a public hearing. You're you're W. wrong.
Mr. Lozano, you're here to talk for or against the ordinance.
And I'm against, I'm against that, Mark, because you don't respond. There, you're, you've got a direct question, show him where where Gabe can remain like a little lamb there. You don't have any law to back you up, and you will not have.
Mr. Martinez, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
I'm going to, is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this item? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to accept as presented, but Mark, as an ordinance, you need to.
Yeah, I'll read the caption. An ordinance amending City of Harlingen ordinance zero six thirty-one, expanding the boundary of TERS number one, and approving the amended project plan and finance plan for Harlingen TERS number one, Texas, and authorizing the city secretary to distribute such plans and containing various provisions related to the foregoing subject.
So moved.
Second.
Those in, those in, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Now to item number nine, consideration and possible action to adopt the resolution suspending the August twenty-third, two thousand, twenty twenty-three effective date for the statement of intent of Texas Gas Service Company to increase rates within incorporated areas of its service territory to permit the city time to study the request and to establish reasonable rates. Finding the city's reasonable rate case expenses shall be reimbursed by the company, authorizing participation with the Real Grand Valley municipalities, hiring legal and consulting services, and finding the meaning at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law.
Mayor Protem, members of the commission, we received notice that Texas Gas Service intends to increase its revenue by twenty-five point nine four percent, that amounts to a nine point eight one million dollar increase to thirty-four cities within the Real Grand Valley. We have until August twenty-third to pass a resolution notifying the Texas Railroad Commission that we intend to intervene, and so by doing so, we would use Thomas Bercato as the attorney, and he would hire a consultant to review the the rate case submitted by Texas Gas Service to determine if it's reasonable. In past times when we've done this, we've actually had reductions in the in the cases filed by either Texas Gas Service or AEP, and so that intervention will not cost the city any money. The services that are incurred and charged by the attorney, the consultant, will be paid for by Texas Gas Service, so staff is recommending approval of the resolution.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. On to number ten, board appointments, are there any board appointments?
Yeah, I'm going to reappoint Michael Murphy to the Harlingen Water Works Board.
And I will appoint Mary Tortas to the museum advisory board.
I have none as well, and so the, okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Exactly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, and that seems to be it. So the meeting is now adjourned, thank you for watching.